I'll ask the clerk to please call row.
Commissioner Waldrich.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson?
Present.
Commissioner May?
Present.
Commissioner Unger?
Present.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Present.
You have a quorum, we'll begin, and first, do we have any citizens' comments?
I have one letter of support from Downtown Frankfurt if you would like for me to read that.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. This is from Kayla Smith, Executive Director of Downtown Frankfurt Incorporated. And she actually addressed it to Blair, which is Blair Hecker. "As Executive Director of Downtown Frankfurt Incorporated, I'm excited to offer DFI's support of this program. We look forward to being part of something that brings our community together and helps us continue assist and work with our local merchants. We will be happy to provide assistance with the implementation and promotion of the program." And I guess I should have said ahead of time that this is in reference to the Shop Local Frankfurt program.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you, Kayla, and do we have any discussion, any questions from the board? Next, will any other citizens' comments?
So, sorry, I was just gonna say I truly appreciate that support. This is something that's been, you know, trying to be created since March of last year to do this program, so I appreciate the committee that's come together and I appreciate the support letter from DFI.
Great. Any other comments, discussion, questions? Well, next, we'll move on to the consent calendar. I'll ask the city manager to help us, guide us through that.
Thank you, sir. Items on the consent calendar are considered by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion. Number one, minutes from the December 3, 2020 special meeting, minutes from the December 14, 2020 special work session, minutes from the December 21, 2020 special regular meeting, minutes from the December 30, 2020 special meeting. Number two, contractor for the Blanton Acres Stormwater Improvement Project. Purpose of this agenda item is to seek commission approval of the construction contract with S. Walk, Inc., DBA as Seven Seas Construction in the amount of $286,198.13 for the Blanton Acres Stormwater Improvement Project and for the mayor to sign all related documents. Number three, request to rebid bus shelter procurement, Public Works Transit. Transit is seeking approval to deem bid number 2202101-67, bus shelter purchase as non-competitive and receive permission to rebid the purchase of five bus shelters and for the mayor to sign all related documents. Number four, salt bid, road salt bid for 2021 fiscal year, Public Works. Purpose of this memo is to request approval for spending up to the amount of $178,000 as approved in the 2021 fiscal budget year for supplying road salt from Detroit Salt Company, LLC.
Did we lose him?
Or could you finish for him?
Okay, let's go down. So he was on the Detroit, or can Shermae finish on that? Do you have it handy there, Shermae? City clerk?
Wait.
Is he back on?
Did my mic turn back on?
Yes, you're back.
Good. I don't know what happened. Sunspot got us. So, number five, did we hear very much of that one?
The Detroit salt, that was the last.
Okay. Number five, professional service contract with Burgess and Nyple from Sewer. This memo is to request commission approval of a professional services agreement with Burgess and Nyple for engineering design services in the amount of $53,651 for the design of Capitol Avenue River Interceptor Phase One and for the mayor to sign all related documents. Feel good?
Good.
Number six, Dolly Graham Park Playground Equipment. Purpose of this agenda item is to seek commission approval to purchase the playground equipment for the Dolly Graham Park renovation project in the amount of $201,644 and $5,000 contingency funds and to authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. Number seven, Mayor Manor. Staff requests the Board of Commissioners authorization for a sewer line extension at Mayor Manor located at 367 Fer sails Road and to authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. Number eight, Personnel Action. Appointment, Bobby Courtney, Police Patrol Officer Three. Appointment, Daniel Henry, Sewer, 119 of 21, is Plant Operator One. Resignation, Kendrick Harvey, Sewer, 121320, Plant Operator One. Authorized payout of accrued leave. Termination, Skippy Redu, Sewer, 122220, Maintenance Tech One. Resignation, Cameron Wallace Fire, 12521, Firefighter Two. Authorized payout of accrued leave. Resignation, Albert Woodrum, 14 of 21, Telecommunicator One. Authorized payout of accrued leave. And then, one other item. Permission to make up to four conditional offers of employment and two alternate conditional offers of employment for the position of firefighter EMT recruit. The request to make these conditional offers of employment is contingent upon successful completion of background, medical, psychological, polygraph, and drug screen examinations by each candidate. And that's from Frankfurt Fire.
I move to approve.
Your motion? All right, second by Commissioner Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Consent calendar is adopted. Commissioner Waldrich?
I have one comment in regards to... Gotta see what number it is, I'm so sorry. Number three, the rebid for bus shelter procurement for the transit there. I'm not opposed to it by all means, but would like some information or for us to reevaluate on where the location. It may be a good time for us to reevaluate the locations of our bus, of our bus stops before we start putting out the new shelters, if that's possible. I know that we've had some issues with some handicaps, some people, you know, maybe getting some of our bus stops closer to some of the living areas versus, you know, further away. If we could reevaluate that before we put out the new bus stops, that would be great.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Waldrich. Maybe that's another future meeting. And next, we'll have a board appointment. And we have an appointment, Chuck Jeviden, to be on the Parks Board of Commissioners. Any discussion?
I make a motion that we accept Chuck Jeviden as a Park Board member.
And we have a motion by Commissioner Waldrich, second by Commissioner Thompson. Any discussion on this? Commissioner Thompson?
Very briefly, I've known Mr. Jeviden for quite a few years. I think he is an integral part of the youth sports programs already. As a parent and volunteer, I think he would make an excellent selection to be on the Parks Board. I wholeheartedly support this nomination and therefore that, that's why I have seconded this motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. Clerk, would you like to call the row?
Would be happy to. Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner May? Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have action items. And we have a first reading of an ordinance. City Solicitor Ross, would you mind guiding us through this?
Happy to, Mayor. I'd also ask, I think number one on that is just a technical matter. If we could take that at first.
Action item number one, sorry about that.
No, that's...
Introductory process, would you mind explaining that to us so that we can...
Certainly. This is basically a technical housekeeping matter. It's appropriate for a member of the Board of Commissioners to actually sponsor each ordinance that comes before us. And so I would just ask that the mayor, prior to the first readings of the ordinance, ask if there is a commissioner that's willing to sponsor the ordinance. And what that means is just that you're saying yes, you would like for it to be read.
Thank you. Do we have a commissioner who would like to sponsor the first reading of this ordinance?
Yes.
All right, now Commissioner Waldrich. I can see you now, by the way.
Okay. And if you're ready, I'll go ahead and read it.
You're ready.
An ordinance amending Section 37.31E of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances relating to pay plan classification and compensation. This ordinance amends Section 37.31E of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances relating to pay plan, classification, and compensation to change the job title of Parks Curator to Museum and Historic Site Supervisor and to amend the pay grade to 80 for the following positions: Museum and Historic Site Supervisor and Golf Course Superintendent.
Do we need a second, a motion on this, or a second?
A motion, yes.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
For the second reading?
First reading?
I'm sorry. I apologize, Mayor.
It's okay.
Mr. Waldrich got me on that one.
It's okay.
It's discussion only.
Any discussion on this order? Commissioner Thompson?
I have not gotten an answer yet from staff. I was wondering what the historical nature of these two positions were wherein they would meet the same classification of pay scale? If anybody can give me a background on that?
Is that something staff can address tonight?
Yes, sir, I believe so. The museum curator, I'll have to get Mr. Pickens to answer, but the golf course superintendent is out there. He is already making in that range of money. Isn't that right, Sean, Mr. Pickens?
Yeah.
And then the other one, we were, we were upping the ante a little bit, Commissioner, to include others, other elements to the job title. And I'll let, I'll let Sean explain a little bit further on that.
Yes, with the, with the museum curator position, we're expanding that out to include more areas of Fort Hill, to be more in-depth, involved in the management of Fort Hill as well as the other historical areas of parks, including Cove Spring. So the waterworks and the water tower at Cove, Hayden Station at Capital View Park, and any other historical or preservation significant sites that are within the park's boundaries. We're expanding their job description to cover that and also expanding their, their work at the museum, too. Expanding them out into the community. They'll be doing more outreach, you know, getting out into the schools when we can, when we can get back in the schools and just being more active in the community, holding more special events and more activities to draw interest into the museum and the historic areas of the park. So hopefully that helps a little bit.
It does, just as a...
Commissioner Thompson?
Just as a follow-up. Is, you mentioned this a little bit, but I want to make sure I understand. Is this individual going to be responsible for procuring activities and, and making sure the activities are completed? Is that going to be part of their job title? Or is that going to fall to someone else in the parks?
No, no, that would be part of their job title if it relates to the museum and historical and preservation significant areas of parks. And just one other note, they'll work real closely with the new Historic Preservation Officer, Ms. Byenberger that we just hired. They'll kind of work in with them to make sure that, you know, we're crossing all the Ts and dotting all the Is concerning parks and wrecks and our historical aspects and make sure we're, you know, following all the state guidelines and regulations.
Any other discussion on this?
Mayor?
Yes?
Just for informational purposes, pay grade 80 is a, is a starting pay of $42,608. And the maximum pay is $66,905. So, like I say, I'm sure the golf course superintendent is, is, I know he's making in that range already. So it's not, not a huge change, just a change of pay grades to, to give everybody on the same playing field.
The next action item is, we're moving on to action item number two, the first reading of the ordinance. City Solicitor Ross, would you mind?
I think we actually just did the first reading.
Okay.
I think we're finished with that one.
Okay, thank you, thank you. It's hard to see everyone right now, so I apologize. All right, moving on to action item number three, the Broadway Parking Lot Transfer.
Ross, are you gonna address that?
Yes, sir, if the, if the mayor will allow it. This is, we have been approached by a company, 114 East Broadway, LLC. This is regarding the Broadway building and the project that we accepted as part of our TIP development plan to turn that property into a boutique hotel with a bar and restaurant, meeting rooms, et cetera. They have need for parking at that establishment. The city has a lot that we have no need for that is located next currently, that is located next to their building. And they have approached us asking if we would be willing to transfer that property to them. So what you have in front of you tonight, in addition to the memo, you have the plat that shows where the property is located, a deed of conveyance, and you have your surplus property order in front of you that shows exactly what we're doing and the statutory authority that we have to do it. So we would entertain questions or a motion of vote, Mayor.
Do we have any discussion on this action item? Commissioner Thompson?
Is this lot being used by the church that's near there or any other business at this time?
I don't believe any other business is utilizing the lot. I think I have heard that in the past, a nearby church did utilize the lot as it saw fit. I don't know that we ever had any formal arrangement with the church, but I do think they use the lot.
And how many parking spots are we talking about?
Not very many. A total, and we do have, by the way, we do have Charlie Jones as a representative of the development. If you all have questions specific to the use of the property, the intended use of the property. But it, it wouldn't be very many. Tommy, Eric, city manager, would you say a dozen?
Maybe, I think I measured that lot at 100 by 100 feet, so it's not very big. We have utility easements on there from Frankfurt Electric Plant Board, so there won't be very many spaces go in there, but there will be some if that, if that development needs some, it will offer them some help, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Unger?
Okay, so we, you brought up the fact that it's a FPB, there's a FPB easement there. So, and there, and there was a substation there at, at one point. So I've heard that there could be possibly environmental implications if the ground were to be excavated. So I, I was wondering if Mr. Jones, if you could talk to that? Is there going to be any sort of excavation work? Has the city or anyone else looked into what could be an environmental issue because of previous use of the property? I'll start with that. I've got a few things.
Is it appropriate for me to speak now, Mayor? Commissioner Unger? Oh, can you all hear me? Okay. The, I had, I also had heard about the possibility of contamination on that lot. But in the past six, eight months, we've been working with the plant board, meeting with Ben Foster and every, all the other representatives there. Vent, and he just confirmed to me via email this evening or this afternoon that they don't know of any contamination that they're aware of. Obviously, that lot has been used for utility purposes since early 1900, so it obviously predates the act of people there. But they, they have no knowledge of any spills or any contamination there from the, the folks I talked to with their institutional history. We just ordered a Phase One environmental to be done. It was conducted about two weeks ago. We don't have the report back yet. We were conducting a Phase One environmental. Secondly, we don't intend for there to be any excavation there. It's certainly just to prep the lot for paving, to pave over it. And as I understand it, that's one of the better things you can do to Brownfields-type space is to not disturb the soil but to encapsulate it by paving over it. So there's no building that would go on that property, no major excavation of any type. It would just be prepping it for the paving the parking lot. And any plans that we have for that lot, based on our conversations with Mr. Coughley, any plans would have to go before ARB. So it'd be looked at again at ARB.
Okay. So you, so you're, the business you're representing has been in discussion with the plant board?
Yeah.
Was that, the, the sale of the property okayed in, like, an open FPB meeting? Or?
Yes, well, two, two things. I believe that back in the fall, I believe that Mayor May then, and I believe it was Mayor May and the prior city manager, Mr. Parker, attended a plant board meeting and this issue was discussed because the plant board did have some concerns about their continued use. But we met with the plant board onsite a couple of times. And this plat that we tendered to you is a result of that meeting to make sure the plant board is accommodated by what they, what they need. And they've signed off on this plat and have approved it. But this ensures two things. One, that their existing structure they have on there, I think, is a cable building of some sort, that they have continued use of it, but also that they have potential for expansion. So they're retaining the land to the north of the, of the building they have there on that plat you'll see for future expansion. And they sometimes have a truck that has to park there to do maintenance. So this plat ensured that the plant board had the space they needed, some expansion for growth to be able to park there, and then accommodated the utilities that are leaving that building. And so new, some new easements were granted on this plat. But this, I firmly believe has been thoroughly vetted by the plant board and therefore approval.
Okay. I was just also looking over the deed and the wording is a little different than the letter that was a part of the attachments we received. So basically, so if the property is not used for intended purpose within five years, the property shall be reconveyed to the grantor for the purchase price of $1,000. And then the addition of, you know, if improvements have been made to said property, the purchase price shall be fair market value of the property. I have, I have some issues with this just because, you know, I want this project to work out. I, I think it's a great idea and I want to see it successful, you know. But just say something happens, the city wants to try to get this property back. I, I don't want the city to be in a position to have to spend any more than $1,000 on this. So that's, that's one thing I've looked at there. Possibly, you know, maybe we need to discuss that or, or take that, potentially try to take that out of the deed. Let's see. And... Man, I think that's really sort of most of my main comments right now. I just feel like I didn't really have all the information I needed. I think I would have liked to have seen the, the approval from the FPB, if there's some sort of document there that you have, as well as, you know, the project plan for intended purpose. I mean, I didn't really, I had heard parking lot, but I didn't really see anything. So that's just sort of my comments there. Thank you.
If I can address the, the deed very quickly, and I certainly understand and appreciate your concerns about, I guess, the wording that I've got in there is kind of open-ended with just the fair market value, because we don't know what that is. So I, I understand that. Our thoughts were that if we were, over the next year or something, were to go in there and do construction on a lot, pave the lot, spend $35,000 on paving it, and then something happens and the hotel can't go forward, then the city would get back the lot with essentially a free paving job. So we were trying to just to have the potential of recapturing some of that funds to do that. Now, I don't, we certainly aren't going into this thinking there's a possibility the project won't work out. Everything that's gone on so far has been very positive. We've got Wayland Ventures that is going to spearhead this project. If you've seen their work up in Louisville, it's a very impressive outfit. They've done hotels and multiple living space and things in Louisville. So they're a top-notch firm. So we think it's going to go, certainly believe it's going to go forward. The, kind of the safety net of the deed was if we could have a possibility, if the worst-case scenario happened, that we recapture some of that, not all the money. Obviously, we're going to spend far more money than we'd ever get back if something happened. But if the, if the commission would entertain maybe putting a cap on it, that, that if the city takes it back, it would be the maximum of fair market value or, you know, $20,000. Because if we paved the lot, you know, it's probably a $50,000 improvement to that property. But if we could put, you know, some kind of cap, reasonable cap on it, that, I, I think that would be reasonable for, the commission would consider that. I, I don't know if I have any official documentation from the plant board, but I know that Eric Coughley's been in touch with them and, you know, everybody's in agreement. I don't know what other documentation we have from them. But I thought I'd submitted everything was, been sufficient, but certainly we can get more.
Mayor, you're muted.
Mayor, if you don't, would you all, would anybody mind if I did, if I reached out to paving company to see what the paving cost would be for that small lot? And that would give us a number to start it. Maybe we could appease the commission and Mr. Jones's company if we, maybe we split the difference to see what the cost is. We can get that done relatively quickly, I'm sure.
Hey, Mayor, you're muted.
Charlie, do you have, do you have, do you have authority to, um, uh, change the deed and agree to something if the, if the?
Yes, sir.
Uh, permission were to come to?
Yes, I spoke to my, I spoke to my clients within the past hour, uh, about issues that may come up, and I have the authority to, uh, to, you know, agree with any changes you might suggest, although it's certainly, it's on your terms, it's, it's for you all to set the terms. Uh, but the, the lot is integral to the overall success of the project, certainly. Um, and we've done a lot of legwork trying to get to this point, so we, we really are hopeful to move forward, we're trying to get to a financing stage, and obviously presenting this to the banks for financing is much more sound if we have control of that, that available parking next door to it.
Um, I guess, you know, a couple of things that I had, you know, I, I don't want us to be naive that, you know, we're just giving a piece of property as though it has no worth, because though it is just a one hundred by one hundred parking, it does add much value to your, to your building, you know, once you have parking, uh, the, and it increases the value of that, so let's, we don't want to be naive as though that the city or that the, uh, company building would be the only one out of money here. So, you know, I do want to take that consideration, and I did, all I saw was a thousand dollars, which to me is pretty good when it's really going to increase that value property much more than a thousand dollars if that property is to be built and sold together as one piece, so, uh, that was an issue for me. Um, but also another one is, are they going to put up signs in that parking to eliminate the church parking there if the parking lot is open, will it, you know, what are the rules and regulations from that, we already have issues with our downtown parking, obviously, this is another reason why they're wanting to buy this parking lot, you know, does it hinder other people parking there at other times?
We, we certainly haven't fully got to all those issues, um, uh, let me first say about the value, you know, I guess there is an argument that the lot can't be used for much other than parking, and so it, a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, whatever it is, does it have greater value to us than a thousand dollars? Absolutely, it does. But the other side of look at that is, is part of, of the economic development, does our project have value to our community? And if we can put in a forty-three room boutique hotel and bring in eighteen to twenty-four full-time jobs, and start drawing people off the Bourbon Trail, not just to pass through Frankfurt, but to stay into Frankfurt, then, uh, it's, it's, I, we believe, I believe it's worth the city's, uh, contribution towards that, and I think that's part of why you are considering this not as a sale for fair market value, but it conveys the property in consideration of the potential economic impact. I mean, if, i- if, when this is built, I, we truly believe it'll be a transformational project in downtown Frankfurt. Um, and from every indication I've got, working with the Wayland Group at Louisville, they're going to make it happen. Uh, this will be the second investment they're making in downtown Frankfurt, they have another one where investing millions of dollars on another one in Frankfurt. Um, so they're, they're making a commitment to Frankfurt, so I'd like to, I don't see it as just a thousand dollars, uh, but it, overall, what committee will, will receive. As far as parking, uh, I don't know how much the church adjacent to it uses it, I know they've gone to renovation certainly over the past two years, adding the parking lot out back, I don't know how much they use it during the course of the week, but I do have to be honest and tell you that I probably would foresee a, a position where that it may be, uh, prohibited to other parking except for hotel patrons. Um, I don't know that for sure, but I don't want to misconstrue the situation, but I would certainly anticipate that would probably what it would be.
Thank you.
Okay, can everyone see and hear me now? Okay, great, uh, I have one suggestion, we could do, since we are offering this at below market value, would it make everyone feel better if we had a, you know, a fair market value on what the property's worth right now, before we transfer it? And then we'll know what we're starting, and then we can look at what other improvements from that point. We can, I think with that, with that, uh, ease everyone's concerns about, because I do think it's an important project, I have no problem offering this to the, uh, to the developer to, uh, start, particularly a boutique hotel that could bring tourists here, but we do need to make sure we get our bases covered on the legal aspects and also on the value of the property, so, uh, do we need to make a, uh, do we need to amend? The, uh, or do we need to change the order, uh, Mrs. Ross, or how do we need to proceed from here?
Sure, you all can either, uh, vote to make an amendment to the deed tonight, and we can present that to, uh, Mr. Jones and the developer, or you can direct staff to prepare fair market value information, as well as, if you'd like, uh, what the city manager suggested regarding the, uh, price of, of paving the lot.
Okay, Commissioner Thompson.
I would move to amend the deed, um, to, uh, change the terms of repurchase at, um, twenty thousand dollars cap, the lesser of the fair market value, or twenty thousand dollars, um, wh- whichever is less at the time, uh, of the repurchase. Uh, I don't, I don't want this to, uh, get exorbitant, um, but I understand that they have some, uh, some costs that are going into this, so that would be my motion.
Do we have a second?
Um, with that, Kai, are you still expecting for staff to come back with the fair market value? I'm sorry, you had cut out on me, but I didn't get to hear it also.
No, we, we, we won't know fair market value until the time that it, it is to be repurchased. So the fair market value of the property could be significantly more if there are improvements made on it, and we're four years down the road, but if, in, in an effort to cap that, I've asked for it to be the fair market value at the time of the repurchase, or twenty thousand dollars, whichever is less. So I don't, I don't necessarily think we need staff to figure out what the cost is at this point, um, because that would, that would still be a significant, um, benefit to the city if we receive a, a paved and, um, enhanced lot at that point, so I think it's still a, a good deal for us if we were to amend the deed to reflect that.
Okay, so we have a motion now to amend the deed to cap the fair market value if we have to purchase this back at twenty thousand dollars, that's the, is that the motion?
Either the fair market value or twenty thousand dollars, whichever is less at the time.
Okay, do we have a second? Another second, we'll continue discussion. Commissioner Waldrich.
I'm looking through and everything and, and getting some information, um, Ms. Solicitor, is this property entirely the city's property? Or does F P B have exclusive rights to the property? Like, how is that laid out? I know that, you know, there is the rights, the right of ways, but what is that property? Are we allowed to sell the property? Um, is, you know, I mean, it's, it's really finicky with Frankfurt Plant Board and receiving information, you know, of questions that is it legal for us to sell this property, and is it a hundred percent the city's property to be able to do?
Understood, um, yes, this property is owned by the city of Frankfurt as reflected on the deed from the nineteen forties. There are no restrictions in the deed saying that it has to be used for Frankfurt Plant Board, uh, that every part of it or any part of it has to be used for Frankfurt Plant Board. But that being said, that's why we worked very, very closely with the plant board to make sure that they had everything they need, because they do actually utilize the property. So we worked, um, for several months actually, and had several meetings, as Mr. Jones said, regarding the property to make sure that we got them what they needed.
Thank you, I had someone wanting information, I just wanted clarity on that, thanks.
Any other discussion? And we currently do not have a motion, is that correct? Commissioner Unger.
Okay, I'm gonna see if I can make a motion here. Um, I would like to make a motion to, um, address the deed, but in order to do that, I would like to have the fair market value of what the property is right now. And then I would also, um, like the numbers on if it were to be paved and in the way that the developer wants to, um, and also just clearing up any legal issues that also Ms. Waldrich brought up, um, Commissioner Waldrich, as well as potential environmental issues. Is that too long of a motion?
Be hard to repeat.
Can I sort it for you somehow?
Do we have a second, uh? Commissioner Waldrich.
I'm sorry, I, I don't know, would that be a motion, or would that be more of letting staff go back and retrieve the information for it to come back as a motion later? I think she's asking, instead of a motion, she's asking and, and requiring the, the staff to go and, and proceed on and bring it back to us maybe at the next voting meeting, if that's okay, unless Mr. Jones feels that there is a, a deadline, I could be wrong, but I think that's what she's getting.
Yeah, I just, I feel like in order to really vote on this, I need all, all information, um, so.
Without objection, we'll direct staff to go back to the drawing board, yes, Solicitor Ross, I can see you.
I'm glad you can see me, Mayor, just one final note on this, I just do want to assure you all, I know you had some questions about the legality. Um, while the details definitely can be negotiated and, and should be, this is your project, this is your decision. Um, I have vetted the legality of the deed itself and also the transfer itself very carefully, I do understand all of the concerns with Frankfurt Plant Board and property ownership, so we were very careful about how we did this, I just want you all to feel confident that that portion of it is what it should be.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
Yes, uh, Mr. Jones, are you still with us, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time, uh, just kind of, uh, to kind of get a general understanding, obviously, this is incredibly important for the project to get going, and I think we all have expressed the fact that we want to see this project come to fruition. I- is there a, a timeline, a deadline for, for this project as far as, uh, you know, an overall level of comfort for the individuals involved, do we, are we in a time constraint here, is this, uh, and if we can get that information back, uh, is it something, Solicitor Ross, Mayor, that we can, uh, can we call a special meeting to move this ahead faster? So if we get the answers we want, can we call a special meeting, or can the mayor call a special meeting to go ahead and get this approved so that the developers can go ahead and get the answer they need to get going on the project? My concern is that, that we, I don't want to delay it to, you know, find us talking about this two months later and us losing the opportunity to, to get the, the, the project off the gram.
If I may speak to our side of that, um, it, it, our, uh, understanding with the Wayland Group is that we would, part of our side of the, of the equation, you know, they, they've already, you don't know this, but they've done, you know, fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars of design work already on the property, they've got historic tax credits already, they've got Plafer Tourism Tax Credits, uh, tremendous amount of work has gone in. Our part of the equation is to secure the lot, and without that component, Wayland's not on board, so it, it delays their total buy-in, and we've been working on this, I've been working on this lot actually, as Solicitor Ross will tell you, two years. Um, on this particular part of it, we've probably gone six, eight months, and I thought three or four times we had it done, um, but, you know, I understand that, that's where we're at, and we've, and you all have an obligation to go through your due diligence, I understand that. Um, my concern is if you want a fair market value, then you're going to have to get an appraisal done, and that's going to take four to six weeks, that could become an issue. Um, and while, if we were just delaying it two weeks or three weeks to the next, uh, commission meeting, no, we can, we can certainly accommodate that. Um, especially if we need to get something in writing from the plant board. Um, and, uh, but as far as the value, if we're, if you're saying the city needs to hire an appraiser to get it appraised, that, 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 that could push it out a while. That, I have a bit of concern with that.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Thompson.
I think the issue here is that we are, we are dealing with, um, unknowns, we're dealing with the potential future fair market value of this property, which we, we have no way of making a determination about that, e- even with an appraisal, and I think that is why we have to do our due diligence, but also make some wise decisions and, um, figuring out what would protect us in a, in a in a, in a manner that would, um, take care of everything that we need to happen. I, I think if we delay it for an appraisal, um, we're going to outlay costs, and it's going to take us more time than probably the developers want. I, I know it's our business and we should be able to take all the time we need, but I, I think this is something that, um, is a business decision that can, um, be, um, addressed now rather than, uh, than doing that, but I'm willing to go along with the majority here.
Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, Charlie Jones once again, can I speak?
Yes, please.
Uh, the, the lot is important enough to us that if you want to strike out the reimbursement fair market value totally from the deed and approve this today, we would be in favor of that. Um, and, and to move, to move forward, um, so i- if that's a consideration, if that's the problem of twenty thousand dollars in the future, we can take that off the table. Um, but I think, uh, to address Commissioner Unger's concerns, I think you could approve it tonight by motion to approve the deed, allow it to be, the deed, the plat to be signed, as long as the mayor receives a letter from the plant board acknowledging their consent. And then I think maybe we could get it done tonight.
Commissioner Waldrich.
And I'm okay with that, or we can meet somewhere in the middle, I, you know, it's something we do need to get done, and, and I know I'd mentioned, you know, maybe we could take it to the next meeting, which is only two weeks away. Um, or as Kelly, um, sorry, Commissioner May, has stated, you know, we could have a special meeting. Um, you know, I'm just not sure what everybody is wanting, and I completely agree with Mr. Jones that, you know, it will take a while, definitely for uh, another company to come in to do appraisal. Um, I, I, I don't think that we're against at all giving the property, we just want to make sure that the city is represented and that we you know, in due diligence of the property, so I'm not opposed at all to do this, move it forward for the betterment of our city and the project, uh, by all means, so if there's a way that we can agree on verbiage, you know, we can basically give a yes, it's just the small print that we're wanting, so uh, as Mr. Jones has stated, if that's how we can do it and everyone approves, then why not make that motion and then move forward if majority of you guys feel the same way? Um, I, I, you know, I wouldn't want it to go on, and as we have stated, if we do bring it up in the next meeting, it is not a voting meeting, however, if it is something that is time-sensitive, we can still, we can still vote on that in our first meet, our work session meeting, if it's something that has a timeline on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
It's still unclear, Mr. Jones, um, you're, you are suggesting that on page two, paragraph three, the sentence that says if improvements have been made to said property, the purchaser shall be, the purchase, purchaser price shall be the fair market value of the property, you're suggesting striking that entire sentence?
Yes, sir, yes, taking that entire sentence off, so it would only be a repurchase for a thousand dollars.
I would, I would move to, uh, amend the deed, uh, with those changes.
I would second that.
I'd second.
Are we amm- amending the deed to reflect those changes and the Frankfurt Plant Board consent? Is that the motion, or is that, it's already, we already have that, correct? Is that the motion, or is that, it's already, we already have that, correct? We have a motion to approve the deed with the amendment to reflect, we'll strike out the clause for the fair market value, and we have a second.
I second.
Clerk, please call the roll on this.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Thompson?
Did you hear me? Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes. Okay. Next action item. Yes. Solicitor Ross?
Mayor, we also need a motion and vote to accept the surplus order and authorize you to sign all related documents.
Okay. I want to make that motion.
I'll move.
Move a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next action item is the Declaration of Two Handguns as surplus order for two retired police officers. Any discussion or staff would like to bring us up to speed?
Adam's on the phone. There he is.
Sorry, I'm a little slow.
I must say, I can't see everyone. I can only see the commissioners and Solicitor Ross right now, so I apologize. So if someone's raising their hand, sorry.
Does anybody have any questions? It's this is pretty standard when an officer retires. The officer is actually putting money into a fund, and the officer is allowed to buy his service weapons when he leaves, so only on a retirement. It allows us to recycle or cycle out older guns and replace them with newer ones.
Thank you, Chief. We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner May? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes. Next action item is a lease agreement for the Pick Pack Building and Resolution. Commissioner Waldridge.
So I have just a few things on this. One thing that concerns me, number one, is the length of the lease agreement. You know, we are not in the real estate property. The city shouldn't be in the real estate property and renting and being landlords and things of that nature. I understand that this property, this project will be going on for a while. Completely understand that. However, that is a strategic piece of property, and keeping it tied up in in this particular lease agreement with no way out, if someone was to give us a call in two months to want to buy this property and put a grocery store or shop local project and things of that nature, we should be able to have something to be able to entertain that idea and for the company who's leasing to understand that that's for the better good of our downtown. I read through it in seeing that, and I just wanted to know, is there a way that we can have a way out if someone does want to purchase that property from us to put something that will help our community?
Solicitor Ross.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner, for that question. I would definitely draw your attention to Section 8. I know no one wants to read the legalese that's in these documents sometimes, but our termination clause that I put in allows us to terminate by the city in whole or in part whenever it's in our best interest, and we only have to give fifteen days notice. So, if any project comes along that you all, or use for that building that you all would rather have, we only have to give fifteen days notice.
Okay, and that, okay, that's what I read that, but I just wanted to make sure that that was including selling the building and that we, that it wasn't just about the property. Okay. Then I'm okay. As long as that covers that, fifteen days is better than what I was gonna give them, but and would we be looking for another location for them if that happened, or that would be solely on the company?
We have no obligation to the company to find another location.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Waldridge.
Mayor, I know I spoke with you probably maybe last week or something in regards to this particular building, and, you know, I don't know what we can really do, but is there any way that we can spruce up the front of that building in some way, shape, or form while they are using it or doing something with the windows? I mean, I don't know if it's really on them to do that, but I would like to keep that area and sprucing that up, whether it's a little bit of paint, washing of the windows, or putting murals in the windows for a while to make it somewhat decent. It's becoming an eyesore, and I'd definitely like for them to keep up that property to where it's not going to be an eyesore.
Point taken. And that's a question, is it our property now? Okay, so it's on us now, so we need to do something with that. I agree. Any other discussion? Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Waldridge, second by Commissioner Unger. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes. Next action item, small business grant update.
Mayor?
Yes, City Manager.
Would you consider to do small business grants updates in the Shop Local Frankfurt program back-to-back? I think one's gonna lead right into the other, and when Ms. Hall and Ms. Heckard get going with that, I think that'll answer a lot of questions for us as far as that goes.
Absolutely. Good suggestion. Yeah, we have a discussion on this from the city staff. This is an update.
Yeah, I had, I had sure May send you the updated list. We've received one hundred and eighteen applications. We funded ninety-three of those. Six applications were deemed ineligible. They were either not within city limits, or they had not purchased the property until after the grant had got going, so they were not eligible. We still have nineteen that either have not given us their information or have not reconciled their issues with the Finance Department. We had given them a deadline of last Friday, the twenty-second, and we still have a few that have not resolved those issues, so that's where we are at this point.
Mrs. Hall, may I ask, so the ones that have not, that need to be resolved, are they close to being resolved? Is it just, what's the timeframe line?
Many of them, David Jones in Finance Department has been working with them since the initial applications were in at the end of October. Some of them are just a few quarters behind. Some of them have not paid their net profits, are not turned in their net profit reports since two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. There's some longstanding issues. Now, we have had some that were that far in arrears that have resolved everything, so we're very excited about that. But Alicia's on the line, so she may have a better perspective than myself.
Yes, so Rebecca explained it well. We just, seriously, with the nineteen, I think she said, our finance group's been working really hard to get everyone caught up that may have been behind in paying taxes, either their net profits or occupational taxes in some cases. It's mostly net profit, and those nineteen, you know, we've had multiple attempts to contact and things of that nature. Some have been more receptive than others, I suppose, for lack of a better word. But at this point, it's just trying to get, you know, the information we need, and it's really, it's really just taxes that they owe back taxes, that type of thing. So, but Rebecca explained it well. Thank you, Rebecca.
And Mrs. Hall, approximately how much have we distributed now through the business grants?
So, if you'll look on the last page of the listing that I gave you, it's nine hundred twenty-six, nine hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred. So, they had originally budgeted for five hundred thousand, then when the mayor asked us to extend the deadline and also raise the maximum to ten thousand, that resulted in that extra money, so we will need to do a budget amendment at some point.
Any discussion on the small business grants? We don't need a motion for anything that we've already distributed.
I think, yeah, I think we're good.
So we'll move that on to what was action item number eight, the Shop Local Frankfurt Program, which is tied into this. So, would staff like to bring us up to speed on this?
Sure, Mayor, if I may. You guys received the documentation, our Community Assistance Program, that just kind of outlines, you know, all the aid that we have been able to offer the community and since March, and, you know, was detailed in three different phases. So, this is our proposed Phase Three program. And it is a business assistance program that does also provide a benefit for individuals within the community. So, this was proposed by Commissioner Waldridge last year at the end, towards the end of the year leading up to the holiday season. So, staff did some work to figure out the best way to run a small business voucher program. And with some recommendations from other communities, we came across this online program called Yifty. And this is what they do. They facilitate shop local gift card programs for communities. This would be no, to implement this program would be no upfront cost for the city whatsoever. If we receive authorization tonight, we can sign a contract to start the Shop Local Frankfurt gift card program. We would be provided with an online platform. Any small locally-owned business, it would be the same parameters as what we had for our small business grants. Customer-based, would be allowed to onboard to be a participating merchant for this program. As long as they accept MasterCard currently in their business, then they don't need to do anything else. They would just sign up and be on the platform, and it would be no cost to them. Residents can go online, or anyone can go online and purchase any increment of a Shop Local gift card that can be used in any participating business. The gift cards don't expire, and they are able to be used retroactively. Businesses can sign up on a rolling basis. And so if you purchase a gift card and then two days later another business signs up that you want to use that card at, you're still able to do that. The part of the aid plan that we had proposed was helping to stimulate the economy through this program by allocating preloaded gift cards. And so our proposal was for a hundred thousand dollars total, and that would provide four thousand preloaded twenty-five-dollar gift cards. We will, and I apologize because I demoed this in November, and so I'm a little bit fuzzy on all the exact details about how exactly we'd set this up for residents to claim and all of that, but I do know that we can put certain constraints on it as to the number of gift cards per user, and we can put an end date on it, and then we can also get updated reports to see how those funds are being spent, how much is left, and et cetera. So, that's just a brief overview. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Waldridge.
Thanks, Blair. I'm super excited about this. I hate that it's taken this long, but I'm glad that it's here and it's before us. My question would be the list of businesses that would be participating. Would we have a icon or something on our webpage that would be gift cards oriented, where I would click on it and everything gift cards, how I would get to get one, how I would pick it up, and where, what businesses are offered? Is that, I'm sure you're gonna do that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, absolutely. So, our whole page, our Shop Local page that is provided by Yifty will have all of that information on it. And I should say, the letter of support from DF5 was read during citizen comments. We also have support from the Tourism Convention and their board. And we've talked to the chamber as well, and so all those groups, we're going to work with them, so we'll all equally be able to advertise this page and put it out there, and also that will be a big benefit. We'll be able to utilize our list of businesses from the small business grants to make sure we get in contact with businesses to sign up and be part of this too, and be able to work with those groups to help with onboarding businesses as well.
Commissioner May?
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions in regard to the expectations for the business owners themselves, and specifically like tax reporting processes and anything. Is any of that gonna have to be done? Is that on the individual as a gift, or will the business be considering a gift? Or where you said it's, you know, if you already accept MasterCard, from the business standpoint, will it literally just, that's how it is? It's just like someone coming in and you, a MasterCard. There's no extra paperwork or reporting or anything that needs to happen from both the business side or from our resident side?
Yes, that's correct. And I will double-check on that for you. I am gonna have another meeting with the woman from Yifty, I hope tomorrow. But when we talked initially, that was what she said. There was nothing else, reporting-wise, fee-wise, anything that would change. It would simply show up as a MasterCard transaction for the business. And then that way, there's also no fees associated with using the funds on the card on the customer side.
So the business wouldn't have to pay a processing credit card fee or anything to accept these, or they would?
It's whatever. They're already paying to accept MasterCard.
Okay.
It's not anything different or above that.
Thank you.
Mayor Unger?
Hey, I like this idea a lot. I think it could be awesome for our citizens. I am wondering, okay, say we, you know, we go with a hundred thousand, do we, what's the process for maybe putting an end date on that if for some reason it's not successful? Sort of wondering about that, sort of a timeline to have an end date, or say, you know, they all get redeemed by citizens, and we want to add more, sort of wondering also what that process would be? And then, let's see. I am wondering if all citizens, you know, have access, will find out about it, you know, I want to really make sure we get it out there because there's certain citizens that a twenty-five-dollar gift card would be a big deal to them. So, really want to make sure the people that really need it have access to try to get one. So, whatever we can do there would be awesome. I think that's probably about all I've got for it. Thanks for all the work.
Commissioner Waldridge.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, to answer your question about the funding, we can with those preloaded cards set expiration dates for when those cards are available. And then we also have the option to then go back in again and do another round if we want to, and we can do that all easily through forms.
Commissioner Waldridge.
Yes, so, and I wanted to touch base on the deadline. I think it's something that maybe we could give, maybe we want to keep tabs on what money's being used and how it's being used, and definitely evaluate if the community is using them appropriately and it's helping our businesses. So I think we should definitely maybe make it about a two-month period, a month and a half, two-month period, I would say, and then reassess to see what's been used, what hasn't been used. Also, what is the parameter set for, I know it would be city folks, how do we sign up and you know that I'm a city taxpayer? You know, is it, you know, I don't want one family to sign up, ten people, because You know, is it, you know, I don't want one family to sign up 10 people because they have five kids. Like this goes to taxpayers or people that are paying, you know, an electric bill or something like that. How do we solidify who gets a card? So one person doesn't get 20 or vice versa, and that they actually live in our city limits.
Yeah. Great question. That is something, so when I did our original demo, we talked about there's different ways, different avenues that you can do these preloaded cards. And that is something that I need to nail down a little bit more with that company. So I, if you all are comfortable with it, I can check into that if we get authorization to move through tonight. Sorry about that. And we can check into more of those details and then I can provide everyone with options and we can decide what the best way is to move forward with those.
Commissioner May.
Excuse the blunt question, but what's in it for Yifty? Like if we're spending a hundred thousand dollars, do they get any funds out of it? What's the benefit to them? Why are they willing to take this on and, and do it? Do they, do they get percentages of any of this money back, kick back to them? Or do we know that answer right now? Thank you.
Yeah, great question. So when we do a preloaded amount, there is a percentage fee on that. And then there is a percentage fee on, I believe, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to find all my information. I believe there is a percentage processing fee on the purchaser. So when you purchase a gift card online, there would be, you know, a two percent fee or whatever that is on the end user. So if you purchase a twenty-five dollar gift card, it may come out to be twenty-seven dollars with processing fees when you pay that. But I will double check on that. Like I said, I'm sorry, I did not get a chance to touch base with the woman from Yifty today and remind myself of all these details.
That was one of my questions. What's the cost to the, the, the person purchasing? So the four thousand people will be purchasing this gift card. Now, it will be a percentage. I, I wonder if it is a fraction of a percent or if it is a multiple percent. That makes a big difference. So on that, but still. Yeah, Commissioner Waldrich or Blair?
All right, there is, it, there is a fee on a bulk purchase. And so that's what we will be considered when we put in a hundred thousand dollars towards these. And so there will be a fee associated with that for us. And I will get an exact price breakdown of what that would be, as well as a price breakdown of what that will be per individual card too.
They're functioning as a bank and they're going to make money on the deposits that we put in there. Not much right now, but, okay, Commissioner Waldrich, I'll have you first.
Yeah, so I have a question and I'm sure maybe Rebecca or Ms. Hall, Blair, maybe, or maybe even solicitor can follow up on it is, I know that we're using city funds for this project. And is there any way for the purchase of the cards and the purchase of the fees? Could they be included in the CARES money or any money coming through from the grant to help purchase the, the items, but the money's not going to the people? Our city money is going to the people. Can it be two different entities? Do you get what, does that make sense?
Um, it does, but to be really clear, we don't have any more CARES money left. We have drawn all that down and put it in the general fund. So whatever we're spending with these, what we're called, what we're calling community relief funds are city dollars. So that's where we are right now. We're, we're hoping we might get additional CARES funding. But right now we're, we're completely spent down.
Um, I did.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. On, as far as the allocation of the hundred thousand dollars for the four thousand preloaded, in theory, they don't get all bought. And now would Yifty just be sitting with a hundred thousand dollars that we went ahead and gave them? And then we were sitting with gift cards left over? Or is it, is it reading, or should I read it up to a hundred thousand dollars allocated with four thousand? So yeah, if, if four thou, if three thousand citizens choose to buy this and we're let, we're sitting on another thousand gift cards to go out, where, where does that extra money go? And are we obligated right out of the gate, the way it reads right now, to, to commit to the hundred thousand and the four thousand preloaded regardless of what actually gets purchased?
So that is, so we will, if, if anything is not spent and that is why we can put a timeline on how long those cards are available, the pre, preloaded cards, we will get that money back. We will not get whatever the fees are, but we will get our lump sum amount back for any gift cards that are unclaimed. So that's, that's the first question. And, you know, we can just see. We can also, if they're unclaimed, elect to leave our window open. We can extend our timeline if we want to, you know, re-advertise, leave those out there longer. But we do, anything we put into it, we do get back. And there was a second part to your question I was going to answer that I just, oh, the other thing I was going to say. The a hundred thousand, you know, that was our staff, that was our recommendation based on just the rest of this plan. And that is, that can totally be changed at the direction of the commission as well. So if there's a different number that the commission would like to direct us to move forward with, or even to discuss at a later time, you know, authorization tonight would just allow us, would allow the mayor to go ahead and sign that we can start this program. Residents can begin, we can get business on boarded and residents can go ahead and purchase their own gift cards. And then we can, you know, come back and choose our time period or amount for preloaded cards. And I did find the fees on each card, it's a one dollar e-delivery fee plus a five percent fee on the amount of the card. It is less than that on a bulk. I think that goes down to, I'm going to have to double check with her, but it is less on a bulk purchase. And we wouldn't be paying that much for each of those gift cards. But that's what the individual gift card purchase fees are.
Okay. Now, with Commissioner Unger first. Okay, Commissioner Thompson.
I couldn't find this in any of the literature you all sent over. But are these Visa, MasterCard, PayPal? What, what are these cards? Do we know what they will be?
They're MasterCards.
They're MasterCards.
I think I have to say here that we will want to know what the bulk discount is.
Absolutely.
Important to know. And other than that though, I think it's a great program. I appreciate you all, you know, bringing it up in the past commission and then doing all the work on this. I think I would like to know that first, but I'm, I'm happy to move forward with it. At least if not with this provider, some other provider that's, that's similar. You don't have a motion right now? We can table this? I'll entertain a motion to table it or I'll entertain a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion to move forward with the program in regard to allow the mayor to sign off on any, any paperwork that would be coming forward. But I'd also like the backside of that for us to have follow-up information on the questions that each commissioner had asked. But I think, I don't want to continue to tie hands when I think it's going to be a great property. I mean, a great program to do, a great project, and I think that we should move forward. So I make that motion to go ahead and move forward with information to then come back to all commissioners and the mayor.
Do we have a second?
Ask a question about the motion.
Well, we got, we have a motion on the floor right now. Have a second to continue debate or do we let this one?
I'll second it for purposes of having the discussion on the motion.
Okay. Okay, now Commissioner Unger.
Thank you. Does that, would this motion mean that we are saying a hundred thousand? Or we're waiting for information before we allocate that amount as well?
My, my motion would be for the amount that was listed. And as we know that that amount is a number we've been working with since last year on the O Commission that we'd brought forth, as well as knowing that it could be up to one hundred thousand dollars if, as she stated, was used. The goal is, you know, for people to use it, for it to go back into our community. We're killing two birds with one stone. We're helping our community members and we're helping our small businesses. So I would say the whole one hundred thousand, because I very seriously doubt the end, that all of it probably will be used, but we will see. So yes.
And then are we also setting a timeline now or would we do that later?
I don't know if that was a question for me, but I, I like, I like the idea, as I spoke with Blair about that before, of having that. I think that once we start, it should be definitely maybe a two month period from the day that the mayor signs the paperwork. And once he solidifies it with his signature, then once Mayor Wilkerson has done that, then it would be from that moment on, a two, two month period. I would think unless someone else thinks it should be shorter than that, that gives us two months for spending and then gives them a couple of weeks to gather the information, report back to mayor. And then the mayor can bring that back to our commission to say, hey, here's what's spent. Do we do it again? It was success, it wasn't? And then we can move forward from there on whether or not we want to take the rest of that money to, like she said, extend the dates for the cards or add more money on those cards.
Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson.
I am concerned, I think, I think it's a great program. I love this idea. I think it has, a, a similar program has worked in Midway and some other surrounding areas. I think it's a great idea. I, I am concerned about these administrative fees and what those will be, e- even with a bulk discount of what those fees will be. I want to make sure that we know that before we allocate funding that may, may bind us to a number that we weren't prepared for. So I mean, right now, if everything holds, it's like two dollars and twenty-five cents for a twenty-five dollar card. So I want to make sure that we, we all understand what that, what that cost actually is before, before we, before we allocate the resources.
Any other discussion on the motion? Commissioner May.
My apologies. I'm going to seek clarification on moving forward on my personal kind of tie-ins to this program. So I want to, you know, potentially ask Solicitor Ross, you know, as somebody that has businesses in the community, if I should recuse myself from the discussion, from the vote or all the above?
Commissioner May, that's, that's a really good question. And honestly, I think it's appropriate if you want to recuse yourself from the vote.
Thank you.
So you're free to discuss. Any discussion, Commissioner Waldrich?
So with Kelly being able to recuse herself, does that mean like Commissioner Wilkerson would have to as well? Since he owns a business that I guess someone could swipe a MasterCard for his services? I'm not sure. I just want to know how many people are going to be in this vote we're dropping.
I, I cannot accept Master, well, I do not accept MasterCard, so.
Okay.
The, the motion as stated is to approve it as it is, a hundred thousand dollars without regards to the administrative fees. And we have a second. No further discussion. Commissioner Waldrich.
Oh, my motion was to move forward with allowing you to sign in for the hundred thousand dollars in regards to the, the questions that would come back to us with the information, such as how much the fees were, because I, I don't think we have a real confirmation. We have some numbers that are thrown out that are not confirmed, as well as the deadlines. So I think those couple of things would come through you, Mayor, I'm assuming. But wanted to go ahead and approve the hundred thousand that we would put out there for this and approve the actual gift card for you to be able to sign on any paperwork. But I, I was expecting that information to come back to all commissioners and the mayor.
We have a motion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
No, and I'd like to explain my vote. I, I, I think we, like I've stated, I think this is a great program and I wanted to move forward quickly. But we, we just passed on some things to make sure we got some more information. And I don't feel like we're doing that here. This is, there, there are some unknowns here that the city's going to get, have to pay, and we don't know what those numbers are. And I am all for putting the money aside for this project and getting it going and helping the small businesses. That's was one of my goals. All I want is a, a full picture of what that is, and I don't think we have that right now. So that's why I'm voting no.
Commissioner May? Commissioner Unger?
I am going to say no and explain my vote because I, I would like additional information as well. I do like the idea of this program. But I think in order to say yes, I would like the, all additional information. I'm also a little worried about possibly distribution to citizens being unfair. So I, I would like to know how, how that can be dealt with and just more info as well as to how citizens will get this fairly. So, thank you.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Now, I'll vote no right now, but explaining my vote, I think for me, it is simply, once we know the exact numbers on this, I think we could, I think we should take this up right away as soon as possible at our next opportunity. I think, and, and I think if we're putting a deadline on this, I, I do think two months would be the max because the whole purpose of this is to put money into the pockets of business owners in February and March and, and in the winter months. So I'm, I'm anxious to get this program started. We just need to work out the details a little bit more. Yes, Commissioner Waldrich.
I definitely would like this information by the next meeting in our work meeting. This has gone on from March. It's March. It's coming up on a year. And allowing someone to be able to sign off, such as our mayor, to do that without doing that. Maybe the motion wasn't understood, but you don't sign on something until it's agreeable on what those numbers are and when they come back on the information we ask. So maybe the motion wasn't heard correctly or understood. But this needs to come back at our next meeting or we need to make a special meeting to bring this up with those numbers. So if we can get those numbers for the actual cost that's going to cost us, the, the date, the date you plan on distributing for this program to start and finish, and also how you plan on doing it fairly. I don't know if fairly is a good word to use, because there's nothing ever going to be fair across the board for everyone, because someone's going to complain about a process or they waited to the last minute to get a card or what have you. So we have to make sure that we're looking at that appropriately as well. You know, we can get it out there. We can talk about it for a week on Frankfurt Plant Board. Allow them to put it on their daily around 10. When we get ready to do that, we can put it out on Frankfurt Channel 10, newspapers and things of that nature. Maybe a week before we drop the cards to give everybody ample time. But I'm not sure if fair would be the right word to use, because nothing's never going to be fair. There's always going to be someone who says it's not fair. So within those, I think that's something we can either call a special meeting so we can get this into the hands of our residents, to get it into the pockets of our businesses and to be able to move forward, or at least get it on there for our working session to vote on in February.
Agreed.
Mayor?
Yes. I don't know if you can see me or not.
I don't know if you can see me or not.
I cannot, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. I just, I would ask just to help staff out the questions that you all have. We've all been taking notes. If you've got specific questions, would you email them to Ms. Hacker or Ms. Ross or myself? So we will know exactly which ones that we need to answer. It will make, it will expedite the process tremendously, I'm sure. And we, we would much appreciate that.
Will do. Okay. Next action item is strategic initiative consultant. I can start on this if someone else wants to start. This is something that I, I had brought up about, an opportunity for the city to hire a consultant to help identify opportunities, strengths, weaknesses, and things that we can do right now for not only community development, but economic development. And I think right now, during the pandemic, we have a, a chance here. It is an opportunity for us to add extra firepower to our staff and help us come out of this stronger than we were going in. I think it's, it's critical right now for us to not only help our, the businesses that are already here, but, you know, help us compete with surrounding communities that are also working right now to improve their situation. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that this is an outstanding idea. I fully support it. I think this is a step in the right direction with regard to our economic development initiatives and how we handle those, a funneling, if you will, of those processes. I think this will help our community partners, whether it's KCDC, Downtown Frankfurt, Inc., The Chamber, all of those organizations, to have a person at the city that is working on these initiatives and can help manifest some of our lofty goals and dreams. So I think this is a great way to get started. I support the idea of this being a contract position. If it looks like this is something that needs to be full-time and we want to bring an individual on for, as a staff member, I, I'm all for that as well, if it looks like that's a popular decision with the group. But right now, I think this is not only a necessity, but it shows the willingness of the commission to set this as a high priority and works with our, the vision of all five of us at this point.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Waterage?
Um, well, Mayor, I, I, you know, I agree with the position overall. I think we have discussed this through some of our conversations. You know, some of the things I see that, that do concern me would be the salary for this position. I, I think I saw somewhere in there, it was about $7,000 a month for the contract position, which would be about $84,000 a year for a contract position. There is also a line in there to be reimbursed for transportation, lodging, meals and, and printing and things of that nature that would be billed at actual cost. So for me, this is a huge position, a huge salary at this time. And, and not that I'm opposed to the actual position itself. I think it's something for us to have a liaison to keep things moving that we want moving forward and to complete. But at that salary, I really think that we need to look, as we're going to in our closed session, more closely at the city manager role that we have available. Because this is a lot of what a city manager would do. And so I think if we're going to move forward with this in the next little bit, I think that discussion sort of needs to look at, you know, do we need an interim city manager? If we're going to have someone in this position at $84,000, doing basically what an interim manager would do, city manager would do, you know, that would save us a lot of money. You know, if we brought this person in who is basically legitimately over the, would be over the projects, is what I'm reading, would be reporting back to the VOC for us, would be meeting with staff on a regular basis as well to make sure that our projects are keep up. So I don't see that us hiring, if we hired this position in the next little bit, what would be the, what would be the option of an interim city manager? So I think that's something that we need to take in consideration to, especially when our city interim city manager position is at about $135,000 right now. We really need to take that consideration that we're not double dipping on positions. If we bring this person in, the next step would basically be removing the interim city manager role and maybe allowing this person, as we hire them on as a contract, to be that interim city manager in that position to get rid of that other salary. So I, I think that's something we need to look into. We don't need to double dip in money, but we do need to save money. So if we're going to push out money for this great position that I think you have thought well on with the solicitor and some other people, I think it's great. But at the same time, if we're going to put more money out, then we need to look on where we're saving money. And I think we needed to diminish the interim city manager position and place Tommy back in his role as Director of Emergency Management to save the role and allow this person to assume the role.
Any other discussion? No other discussion? Can you all hear me? Okay. I follow up on that by saying, you know, it is, I think this position is different than the city manager. I think that the, my view of the city manager is an administrative officer who is performing, acting as our executive agent, who is supervising staff and helping with the budget and doing the day-to-day operations. My idea with this consultant is we, we have somebody who is not tied in, you know, not at, in, in City Hall every day, managing the day-to-day. This is someone who's out and about across the state, helping us raise the profile of Frankfurt, helping us recruit certain types of businesses, connect with certain types of people, individuals, families, institutions, helping us recruit tourist attractions. And I think right now, in the, in the situation that we're in as a country and then as a city, we, we have it. We have to make investments and we can't be penny wise and pound foolish. We have to make investments and try to get extra firepower, if you will, to break out of this. And, and this is an opportunity that we have. And I don't, you know, this is something, when you look at it on an annual basis, if, if we're sitting here 12, 12 months from now, and we have outlaid that much, then it means it has been worth it. I think if you look at that contract, we have an opportunity, both sides, to disengage and break that contract, you know, if it's just not working out. So in, in my mind, I'm, I'm looking at it as, you know, as a, as a small bet, if you will. And we're, we're, we're taking a little bit of chance, that's for sure. We're taking a little bit of risk, we're outlaying some money. But we may get something far in excess of what we were expecting on this too. So I really think that it is worthwhile, while we have the opportunity to do that. So, but I hear your point. Commissioner Unger?
I, I am in support of this role. I think it's a great idea. I think that it's something that's, that we, like you said, we could really see some projects take off because of it. But I, I was just wondering, so say, you know, this is approved tonight. What's the process for hiring a consultant? And it's not something I've ever really done before. So staff could speak to that, you know, how long that might take or a little bit of process there.
Solicitor Ross, please.
Sure. Actually, this contract would not come before you all for approval until we have someone ready to step in that we would recommend that you all actually put into the role and approve their contract. So because it's a professional services agreement, it does not have to go through the bidding process. It does not have to go through the interviewing, normal application and interviewing process that we would for an employee. So it's a little bit different. It could be a matter of negotiating with a single individual if it came to it and proceeding from there. We, if, if you all wanted to proceed with this tonight, we would just ask for direction to keep going with it and bring it back to you when we have a recommendation.
I cannot see Commissioner Thompson right now, so I apologize. Commissioner Thompson, please speak up if you want to say something. So if we have a motion, it is to make an offer of the contract or, or bring a name in front of the commission for the next meeting. Solicitor Ross, that's for you.
Yes, the motion could be to proceed with pursuing the contract and we will bring it to you for an actual vote at the upcoming, at an upcoming meeting.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
I will make the motion to proceed with the contract.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, second, back Commissioner May. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Waterage?
Yeah, all right, do you have a question? There wasn't a discussion period, sorry. That's okay. So I do support the position fully, but I wanted to ask Solicitor one question really quick for my yes vote, is that, being that it's contract, I know that, you know, it's going to come before us on who is going to have this position. But is there any way that this, this position could hold a, I guess, a title of assistant city manager or interim city manager as well to help out within that? Or would that need to also be listed in the contract if we wanted that at any given time? Would that be something we would have to amend in the contract to put that in there if we needed to use that person for one of those positions, interim or an assistant?
Commissioner, if we did want to do anything like that, we would definitely have to amend the contract for the portions that could be utilized for those roles. But we would also have to look at the specific procedures for finding the interim city manager and entering into a contract for that. There might be a way to combine the two, but it would require a little bit of effort.
Okay, I thought so. Thank you, my vote is still yes for the position.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes. And next action item. Well, we're looking, moving into closed session, I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion and go into closed session, Mayor.
Sorry, I wanted to read it.
Commissioner Waterage, sorry, yes.
Commissioner May, if you could read the black line underneath the executive session for your motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Waters. Executive session per KRS 61.8101F. Personnel discussions which may lead to the appointment or dismissal of an employee. This meeting is for the purpose of discussing the city manager position. Action may be taken in open session.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, Nay? Okay, we'll go into closed session. Second, all those in favor of adjourned, say aye. Opposed? All right, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, you guys.